Good evening, everybody. My name's Cassandra. Welcome back to Bombix. Okay, I know it's the first time for a few of you, but many of you have been here for a few of these events this election season. So thanks for being so engaged and participating and showing up to learn more. Thank you. So first of all, thanks to the amazing team at Northampton Open Media. This event is being streamed and recorded. So all of you who preregistered, we will share that link with you so you can find it later, pass it along to your friends. Or if there was some great thing that went by too quickly, you can always re-watch so that all of that information is available to you on your own time for the next week. Well, it's available after that, but you have a week to make a decision. You know what I meant. Anyway, okay. Also, a couple other flight attendant announcements. If there's anyone in the audience who needs an assisted listening device, Matthew, our technician at the back, has those available. Go see him. He'll get you taken care of. And those are actually available for every event that we host here. So if there's ever an opportunity, like a time when you can't hear something, we can always make that happen. For the handful of you who are here for the first time, the restrooms are to my left, your right, through that door and down the hall. They're a bit of a hike. They've got that retro early 60s vibe. So yeah, it's great. And we're going to be renovating early next year. So just bear with us for a few more months. So I just want to take a minute and pause. This has been a very frothy election season. There's been a lot of, how do I want to say? Not all the communication has been kind. So I just want to take a minute and pause tonight and share a few agreements that we think are really important in this space. First is to be courteous. Please don't interrupt. Please refrain from, ah, the dramatic sigh, the big eye roll. Just, we're all here to listen and to learn more. So please extend that courtesy to these candidates who are working really hard. It's no small thing to campaign. And we also want to make space for ideas that might be different from our own. And with that in mind, our second agreement is that we listen to understand, not to come up with that next witty remark or, you know, thing that we might want to say, but really to understand where the candidates are coming from. And if you have a question burning inside you that you just want an answer to, the amazing folks from the League of Women Voters are over there in the corner with index cards. You may have picked one up on the way in, but you can scribble your question down, and they'll be sharing those questions with the candidates. So that's the way to get your questions answered, is to go write them on a card, and they'll share them with the candidates. And then last but not least, this is a process. So we may not get everyone's questions answered tonight. There may be issues that come up that are complex, and you might walk away with an imperfect understanding. So I'm going to invite us all to just be comfortable with non-closure. This is a process of learning. And hopefully, at the end of the night, you will have more information and a fuller understanding of the issues that we're going to talk about. And it's okay if you don't know everything. The expectation is not that you leave in two hours as the expert, but that you increase your knowledge so that you're a more informed, more engaged, more deeply rooted citizen in this community. Thanks. Ah, okay, we are about to begin. It is my absolute pleasure to welcome Ingrid Flori, who's going to be our moderator tonight. And Ingrid is going to share some of our process and some structure for how this event is going to work. Thank you, Ingrid.
Thank you, Cassandra. So good evening and welcome to our Northampton Ward Two and Ward Six Candidates Forum. Democracy requires us to participate. Thank you for coming here to learn more, whether you're online or whether you're here in person. We appreciate it. These forums are organized by the League of Women Voters of the Northampton area. My name's Ingrid Flori. I'm a member of the League and your moderator for the evening. The League of Women Voters, if you don't know, is a nonpartisan political organization whose mission is to encourage informed and active citizen participation in government. Tonight's candidate event is also cosponsored by Bombix. Thank you so much for providing this wonderful space, the technical support, and volunteers for this evening. Thanks to Northampton Open Media for streaming tonight's event. A recording will be available. And they've also been doing recorded interviews of many candidates. So you can go onto their website to see those. The Daily Hampshire Gazette is an excellent partner and a co-sponsor, and also the Northampton Chamber of Commerce. We also have a lot of volunteers in this room. We have our timekeepers sitting in the front. So if you can wave so the candidates can see you, they will be helping us to keep on schedule this evening. And we have lots of other volunteers who have helped out. So thanks to everybody who's contributed. Tonight, we have the four city council candidates from Ward Two and Ward Six. Unfortunately, one of the Ward Seven candidates who we had invited had an unforeseen conflict, so we had to cancel that portion of the forum. As I mentioned earlier, there are recorded statements from those candidates on the Northampton Open Media's website, so you can consult with them. We have panelists tonight. We have Alexander McDougall from the Daily Hampshire Gazette and Jean Chirdak from the League of Women Voters in Franklin County. So Alexander will be asking questions based on his extensive knowledge as a reporter. And Jean will be asking questions from the audience. So if you are filling out those cards, the one thing that's really important is that all questions be addressed to both candidates, because the candidates will be each answering each question. So as Cassandra put it, if you would like to submit a question, please go ahead to the back of the room or raise your hand, and one of our volunteers will scoot out a card sheet and a pencil for you, and you can write it down. And then you can pass it down the aisle so they can come and pick it up. After the Ward Two candidates complete their portion, we will have a brief break, and then we will resume with the Ward Six candidates. And as you saw earlier, we have a slide that gives you instructions on how to vote here in Northampton. We will have that up again during the break so that you can take a picture and remember all the different ways you can vote, because voting has already started here in Northampton. The early voting is happening, and the polls will be open on the Fourth. So exert that right to vote. One request of the audience. Please do save your applause for the end. We will give our candidates a hearty applause at that time. Also, please, please, please silence your cell phones. Candidates as well, if you have your phones with you. You can look at them if you're using them for reference for your opening statements or closing statements, but please make sure that those are silenced during the forum. So a couple reminders for our candidates. We're going to begin with two-minute opening statements based on the order that your names appear on the ballot. Then we will be alternating between Alex and Jean to be asking questions. And you will have one and a half minutes to answer. Our timekeepers will hold up signs telling you when you have 30 seconds and 15 seconds left. When they hold up the stop sign, you don't have to stop talking immediately. Finish your sentence. Just don't make it a really long sentence. I've moderated debates where people are really good at that. So let's be fair. We are not providing additional time for rebuttals, but if you want to respond to something that the other candidate has stated, you can work that into your allocated time, either in your closing statements or answering other questions. And we'll be alternating between the two of you as to who answers the question first. And part of my job will be to remind you. So you have enough other things to think about. So unless there's something big I have forgotten, I think we are ready to get started with our questions for the evening. So I would like to welcome Deborah Pastridge Clemmer and Alan Joseph Simon, our two candidates for Ward Two. And let's give them a round of applause right now, because they're here. So we're going to start with two-minute opening statements. Al, you're going to go first, and then Deborah, you'll go second.
Good evening. Thank you to the organizers for this opportunity. You'll see my name on the ballot as Alan Joseph Simon, but as the musician Paul Simon told us, "You can call me Al." I bring my extensive experience in municipal government and finance from an 18-year elected history in Windsor, Connecticut, a community the same size as Northampton. Having served as Finance Committee Chair for 12 years, I know better than most the real fiscal constraints on cities and towns and for the need for the right priorities and choices to meet the needs and expectations of residents. My experience was recognized as relevant to Northampton by my appointment to the City Council Select Committee on Rules in 2021. I was appointed by City Council President Jeanne Louise Chiara. I spend a few months now talking to residents of Ward Two, about 450 of them so far. Their concerns are many. Public school funding, the poor condition of our roads and sidewalks. People are unconvinced about Pritchard Main Street and are unhappy with the overpayment to purchase the Resiliency Hub building. They're concerned about their water bills, about a screwed-up property evaluation for residential condominium owners. Residents of Rust Avenue found out their two fire hydrants did not work when there was a house fire this summer. It's been 42 days since I wrote to the Director of Public Works asking questions about fire hydrant maintenance. Like many of you, I haven't received an answer from the administration. The common thread to these issues is the city has lost focus on delivering the essential services people rely on every day. Residents believe they are not getting what they're paying for. Indeed, there is a big gap between what our leaders want and what the residents of Ward Two expect. It's time the residents of our ward are heard and their views represented. There are no magical solutions. We need leaders who recognize the problems and are willing, with curiosity and creativity, to try to solve them. I'm asking for the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you all for being here today. The League of Women Voters for organizing and to Bombix for hosting. In early 2017, I founded the grassroots group Indivisible Northampton. As a lesbian, I felt a deep fear about the future, knowing how quickly our hard-fought rights could be undermined. I brought our community together as it became clear we needed to support one another in the face of uncertainty. I organized over 25 marches and rallies and invited activists and politicians to speak. I'm proud of my time as a member of 1199 SEIU. I served as Vice President of the Democratic City Committee and Ward Chair for Ward Two while working in radiology at Bay State. When Karen Foster Cannon stepped down as Ward Two City Councilor, I ran and won, and I'm honored to be that Ward Two put me on the ballot for a second term. I didn't run because I believed our systems were broken, although we can always do better. I ran to serve and uplift our community, working respectively with department heads, the mayor, and my fellow counselors. These relationships are key to advocating effectively for Ward Two. I'm proud to have cosponsored 13 resolutions, voted positively on two budgets and the mid-year appropriation. I am Chair of Community Resources and on three other committees, and I approach every agenda item with thorough research and preparation. While I may not deliver the smoothest speeches, my dedication to hard work is unwavering. I maintain open communication through monthly newsletters, semi-monthly office hours, and am responsive to your emails, texts, and calls every day of the week. I am here for all constituents, ready to hear your concerns, regardless of your support of my campaign. In these polarized times, I strive to foster collaboration, kindness, and mutual respect. We need representatives who understand fiscal responsibility and how things work here in Northampton. I will always find truthful answers and ensure transparency and dispel misinformation in my communication with you. I have the experience, knowledge, and commitment to continue serving Ward Two effectively.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go to our questions from our panelists. Alex will have the first question, and Deborah, you will answer it first, and Al, second.
All right. Thank you both for being here tonight. The first question is regarding the planned Resilience Hub. For those who are unaware, the Resilience Hub was purchased, the former First Baptist Church was purchased by the city with the plans to convert it into the Resilience Hub with the goal of creating a multipurpose center that can provide shelter in climate-related emergencies, address housing issues in the city, host several organizations. Do you support the city's approach to the Resilience Hub and an approach to these issues, or do you feel that there is a better way?
Which way to say?
Do you feel there is a better way?
Thank you. I do support the Resilience Hub. The homeless population is increasing downtown, and this would give people a place to go during bad weather, and everything would be housed under the hub. All the manor will be in there. There's going to be a nice kitchen on the main floor and washing machines and showers for people to take care of their personal needs. There's a federal grant for the Resilience Hub, and Trump took the grant away for the work that needs to be done. The city got a formal appraisal for the church before finalizing the purchase, and they paid less than the appraisal. And more money is needed to get the building ready. The city's looking for grant opportunities, and I think we need it. You know, the manor is outgrowing their space at St. John's now, so we need a new place or a larger place for them to go to. And this, you know, this would be perfect. I looked at the, I had a tour of the place. The bottom is gorgeous. It's going to be a huge industrial kitchen. The place had to be downtown. People that are homeless can't drive to the suburbs of Northampton to find these places. And, you know, people talk about the deeds place, but that would have had to been raised, and we would have had to start from scratch, so it would have been much more expensive. So, and we also got property out of Sewers' hands.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a lot of money that has to go into making this Resiliency Hub work, as I understand it. The first, of course, was the excessive purchase price of $3 million. It's my understanding that the facility needs renovation. I haven't seen anything publicly listed about estimates for renovation costs. I've heard perhaps in the millions. I don't know. Typically, what a government would do if it had a potential project, it would have some listing of those types of projects, sort of separate but attached to a capital improvement plan. We would call them unscheduled projects in Windsor, the town I came from. But I don't see any of that, so I have no idea what the city thinks this building will cost to renovate. After it's renovated, there'll need to be operational costs found somehow. And my understanding is that what this facility would do is to take services that are in multiple locations and put them in one location. It is not a shelter. People cannot sleep there. So it seems, at least what I know, to be an extremely expensive project for some marginal gain. I will note that the shelter for homeless folks is up in the industrial park off of Damon Road. And there, I don't know that there's a connection between the Resiliency Hub and that shelter.
Thank you. A reminder to the candidates. You're welcome. If you need a question repeated, please feel free to ask for that. All right. The next question will be on behalf of the audience from Jean. And Al, you will be answering it first, and then to Deborah.
Thank you for being here. Okay, I'm going with this question. I'm going to kind of combine two questions here. Do you support Pritchard Main Street? Why or why not? And what makes Pritchard Main Street safer or less safe for cyclists? And what alternatives will enhance cyclist safety?
Truthfully, I've never developed a strong opinion either for or against the project. And the biggest surprise that I have had as a candidate going door to door is to find the amount of opposition and discomfort with the plan amongst residents. I was not expecting that. But what I've heard from people is they're just not convinced. I can only, of course, speak for Ward Two, because that's the only place I've been out canvassing. But it seems striking to me that a project that is a top priority and seems to be barreling ahead, it's a real problem for a community if the people who live there do not support a huge capital project. And that really should give the city pause. If the city intends to proceed and push it through, regardless of what people think, it will only decrease trust in our local government, and we have enough of that already.
Thank you. Deborah?
Thanks. I'm very excited about the revitalization of downtown and wholeheartedly support the project. We are getting the money from the state. We're getting $26 million from SDOT and the federal government and ARPA money. And we got chosen for this because we're the top 5% of crash clusters in the state for pedestrian and bicycle accidents. I've also been canvassing. The last time when I ran, there was a lot more concern about Pritchard Main Street. And this time, people seem to be accepting it. People are excited about it. When there were questions, and I explained why we're doing it and that the infrastructure is being paid for for $3.5 million of COVID money that we have put away, and we don't have to pay for any of that. Then there, you know, people are like, "Well, that makes sense, and we're not going to turn down $26 million," because we would have to pay for all of that. And we would have to pay for the sidewalks to be extended and made ADA compliant. We're getting new trees that'll be healthier, and the soil will absorb the water that we're getting in these torrential rainstorms. The sewer pipes are going to be larger. I mean, the drainage pipes for the storms. And the bike lanes, we have a new, the bike lanes have to be four feet between the bike lane and the car, since our streets are so wide. No problem. We're going to do that. That's also getting paid for, and it's in ordinance now in the state that we have to have that.
Okay.
And, was that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You can hold on to the mic. You have the next question first, and it's going to be posed by Alex.
Yeah. One of the largest, or the largest organization in Northampton is Smith College with an endowment of more than $2 billion. But as a nonprofit organization, does not pay any property tax towards the city. Now, Smith, like many other large colleges of its size, will contribute to the city in the form of a payment in lieu of tax or pilot program. Do you feel that Smith contributes enough to the city through this pilot program, or do you feel that they could be doing more?
Everybody can always be doing more. We can always use more money. Smith does give us money. They gave us $650,000 last fiscal year, which the mayor spread out between three years. And they give the schools their computers. The high school, they give them these large Apple computers. I would, you know, they're in town, too. The students spend a lot of money downtown. Of course, I would like them to give us more. I would like them to have an ongoing amount that they'll guarantee every year so we can really plan for it. And I would like to talk to them this year, since they're in my ward, and see if we can, you know, work out something with them. And I know the mayor's been trying really hard to work out with them some kind of ongoing, you know, money. Students can also take classes there, which is huge. You know, they don't, they could chip away at their graduate degree. And, but I think they might be more likely to give money if we have a plan about how we're going to spend it and have one-time, use it for one-time funds and like training teachers or something for the students. And if we use it for hiring, which is what's been proposed, the money, the amount we need goes up every year. So I think we can work out something with them once we make a plan with the schools and how that we're going to fix things over there.
This question exists because we fund our services on a local level through a regressive property tax that has limits on it. It's a terrible way to fund public services. It's the system that we have, and we're put into a situation where we have to find other revenue somehow. Smith College can be part of that. You know, I presume when the laws are written to exempt nonprofits, they were thinking about little nonprofits that really didn't have much. But this is a nonprofit that's got, what, a couple billion dollars in endowment that clearly could participate in the city more. Obviously, conversations have to happen. You can't force them to. But I would hope that they would see a responsibility and an obligation as a very wealthy institution to help a community that's been cutting public education.
Thank you. Next question will be one from the audience from Jean, and it will be fielded first by Al.
In what ways do you believe you can be supportive to public housing residents?
First, let me state, I think we ought to have more public housing, that that is actually one of the missing components in the discussion about housing supply and affordable housing is the social housing factor, the ability of the public sector itself to be part of the solution. I don't know the details of the difficulties that the Northampton Housing Authority has had. I know they've had leadership issues. I have spoken to some residents of public housing in the course of my canvassing. Their concerns are really beyond the place that they live. It concerns the provision of social services, mental health, drug addiction services, and the like, which we coordinate with a lot of nonprofits around here. I think we clearly need more support of that type. And I don't know what the answer is right now, how to get it, but I certainly think it's important.
There is a huge housing shortage throughout the Commonwealth for all income levels and accessibility needs. I support housing for everybody. I'm proud of the new 20-unit subsidized housing in Ward Two on Laurel Street. It was built by Valley Community Development and city-owned, on city-owned land from the state hospital and permanently restricted to those make earning less than 60% of the area's median income. And there are 300 more housing, more units underway. And, you know, we can always use more. I'm going to support, or continue to support any zoning changes as long as they're reasonable for housing to be built in different areas. It makes sense to build And it makes sense to build more downtown, especially subsidized housing, because a lot of people that need subsidized housing don't have cars. And everything's in walking distance, so there's public transportation and bike share program for them. And I was co-sponsored the rent stabilization resolution this year with the mayor and councillor Jarrett. And, you know, those people, not only do we need housing, but we need, people need to know how much their rent is going to be raised every year. People were saying the rent was raised $100 or $150 a month without warning, and that's just not sustainable. I know everything's going up, but we have to have some way for people to make plans and to not get these surprises and not be able to live in their place anymore and move. And the group is working with other communities, so we're not the only ones having this problem. It's a problem everywhere.
Thank you. All right, next question will be coming from Alex, and Deborah, you will answer it first.
Do you support a proposition two and a half override to allow for spending increases related to the city's budget?
Prop two and a half, the overrides were built into the whole system. We use the money, we put them in, we put the overrides in stabilization funds, and then we use that throughout the four or five years between the next override. The way it's set up, we, you know, we get more than 2.5% because we get money from hotels and restaurants, but we, it's going to happen, we always need an override. But I want to do something that is, makes sense, you know? We can't, we can't just pass a huge override like we would have had to do if we passed the strong budget for the schools. If we passed that budget that was requested by the school committee, and we would have had to ask for a $5 million override this year, and which would have meant for a lot of people in Ward 2, $800 more a month for their rent, I mean, for their, for their property taxes. And it wouldn't have passed, and we'd be in worse shape than Hadley is right now. I would support an override. They, we got, we were lucky to get it pushed ahead next, last year, till, and there's going to be one next year, and it'll be, there'll be another one in about five years. If we would have passed the strong budget, we would have had, needed another one in four years, then even larger one another three or four years later. So, you know, prop two and a half is the way it is in the Commonwealth, so we have to have overrides to be able to afford fixing things, and a lot of the money goes to the schools.
The fiscal stability plan doesn't work anymore. The plan that was created 10 years ago is failing. And the reason I can tell you that is because now the fiscal stability plan, under this mayor and supported by a majority of this council, requires both permanent service cuts, in this case to our schools, and overrides. You heard, and the plan is still, to ask for an override next year on top of the service cuts. I don't think that flies. What I've told people who've asked me about overrides on the doors is I wouldn't support an override until this council does its due diligence and looks at every sector of our government and its operations. Look, understanding fully how the money is spent to make sure that it is in fact being spent efficiently and wisely. We may in fact be able to find some money that's freed up that we could redirect to other public services. But I think it's a really hard sell if going forward, you're going to say to people, yes, give us some more taxes. I'm sorry, we've had to cut your services.
Thank you. Just to mix things up a little bit, the next two questions will be coming from Jean Chirdak on behalf of the audience. And Al will be answering first, and then to Deborah.
Ward 2 is home to a weapons manufacturer, L3 Harris. They make deadly technology used for bombs and nuclear weapons, and neighbors say they're a nuisance. Do you support L3 Harris operating in Ward 2?
I don't know that my personal feeling has actually any impact on whether they can continue operation or not. I would certainly prefer that our economy is not so extensively based on war spending. But the politicians have done a very good job of spreading that spending into pretty much every congressional district to ensure that there's going to be continued support for this. We're not an island, and the rest of the country has this kind of question as well. I'm not aware that we have any authority to force them out. I do want to have deeper discussions with advocates who've, who've made L3 an issue. I haven't been able to schedule that yet, to understand what they propose, but also to have discussion about what the impacts to the community would be if by some way they decided to leave, because there are impacts. And we do need to consider what the loss of jobs would be. We do need to consider what the loss of property taxes would be, because we are in fact trying to pay for our services here. So I look forward to some more detailed discussion about that with the folks and their proposal.
L3 Harris is there, they own the land, the business certificate has already been renewed, and the city is legally obligated to let them continue to be there. I just voted positively for the divestment resolution, and so we're taking all the money, it wasn't very much, it was about $77,000 in, in different funds that, in companies that supported, you know, war and the mayor and the finance director's been taking the money out of those funds. We're almost, there's about $20,000 left, which they feel confident we can take out in a very short amount of time. And they do pay taxes, the people that work there, they, you know, in our town, they're walking around Village Hill all the time, and they spend money here. If there was another company like that that wanted to move into Northampton, I would have a problem with that, but they're here, so legally they have to stay. And getting back to the last question, there weren't service cuts. And, you know, I've keep, I've been hearing now for almost two years that we have all this money lying around, and it just isn't there, and I haven't seen from anybody who's proposing that, where the money's coming from and how it's going to work. And the budget comes up pretty quick when you become a new councillor. And, you know, I've talked to, yeah, I've just talked to the finance director, and she's not able to find it, so I don't think it's there.
Thank you. Jean, another question from the audience, please.
What are your thoughts about the balance of power, the executive and legislative parts? I'm sorry. Oh, balance of power in Northampton. I'll read it again. What are your thoughts of the balance of power in Northampton, the executive and legislative parts?
So the charter, it's mandated to review every 10 years on the nines by an ad hoc committee. Before 2012, the charter, before the 2012 charter, the mayor ran the city council meetings. The charter changed that and weakened the mayor's power. You know, we need somebody, the mayor, we need somebody to make the big decisions. And switching to a weaker mayor, I don't think that would work for Northampton, and other cities, other towns have it, and it just doesn't seem to work as well. You know, the mayor has to talk to the council, too. She doesn't, doesn't make decisions on her own. We cannot approve things. And I do talk to the mayor often, and I talk to the other department heads, and I do have a great relationship with them, so I can get answers much quicker than 42 days about questions that arise that help constituents. And, you know, if I don't understand something, I talk to the mayor, I talk to department heads, and then I make my decision about how I'm going to vote. So the mayor doesn't have the final say in everything, and there's nine of us on council, and we all make our own decisions, and we could not vote for something if we don't feel it's something that's beneficial to Northampton or Ward 2.
The mayor has too much power in the city. And the, the incredible instance or the relevant fact of this is pertaining to how the budget gets adopted here. If you read the section in the charter about how the budget adoption works, it's a actually poorly worded section that is unclear. And the interpretation that the administration has taken, let me refer, let me go back. The people who wrote that clause did not seem to think there was a circumstance where the city council would vote against the budget. Budget being a financial order is supposed to have six votes. There's nothing in the clause in the charter about what happens, like, what do you do what happens over the past two years where you don't get six votes? And the city administration has taken on themselves to interpret that to mean the mayor's budget goes into effect anyway. Which practically speaking, why does the city council have any, any role in the budget at all if the mayor's budget can simply go into effect even with an opposition by the council? The mayor being the chair of the school committee has the practical effect, based on my observation, that the superintendent thinks she works for the mayor, because the mayor controls the money, which neuters our school committee. There really need to be some significant changes. I don't know if the city will do it. I personally think the city of this size would be fine with a professional city manager.
Thank you. Thank you. You can hold on to the mic, Al. You have the next question first, which will be coming from Alex.
Recruiting and retaining staff in departments like the DPW is an ongoing challenge. What steps would you take to strengthen the workforce, particularly at the DPW, such as maybe perhaps competitive salaries, training, or high school career pathways? And how would you foster a culture that values and supports municipal employees?
Well, the city council doesn't manage any staff other than its clerk, and we actually can't interfere with the management of employees, so I'm not sure that question pertains to the powers of the city council. The city council does have the right to investigate and look into city operations, and I would like to get some more answers on what's been going on in the Department of Public Works. To have an extraordinary number of open positions, I think it was a 27 at one point, out of a total roster of maybe 80, is really incredible. And the department itself does return money at the end of the year from its budget. When you have questions about fire hydrant maintenance, which is a management issue, I think the city council needs to look very closely.
Recruiting and retaining staff in departments like DPW is an ongoing challenge. What steps would you take, if any, such as competitive salaries, training, or high school career pathways to strengthen the workforce? And how would you foster a culture that values and supports municipal employees?
DPW's contracts, as well as every contract in the whole city, was renewed this year. They did get a significant raise, and there are a lot more applicants applying now for the job. Staff turnover is a problem. It's not only getting people, it's getting them to stay. And the, there's a huge labor market shortage all over the country, not only in Northampton. And she's, so the DPW director has been hiring contractors to do the work just so we can keep the city going, and that's been really effective. We had some great people coming in, and they patched up all the potholes, and people are really pleased with the work they're doing. And it's a, you know, it's a very complex system here, and, you know, I think the director's doing a really great job, and we have to tell these people they're doing a good job. You can't be at meetings or approach people like they don't know what they're doing. They're all highly skilled, highly educated, and been doing their jobs for decades. So you have to, you know, show a little bit of respect of, to the department heads and talk to them. And there's 1,400 fire hydrants in Northampton, and they're checked and maintained. They occasionally get hit by cars, and people don't report it, and it's not like the water shoots up like it does in the cartoons. It kind of trickles out, and then sometimes there's a problem with it, and you don't find out till there's a regular preventive maintenance check. But, you know, they're, they're in good shape, and we're in a city, so there's usually a hydrant right down the street that they can quickly run over to and hook up.
Thank you. All right. Next question's coming from the audience via Jean. And Deborah, you'll answer first, and then to Al.
What is one point of agreement between you and your opponent?
Village Hill is a great place to live, I guess.
I like that one.
I mean, I love, I love Northampton. I moved here 14 years ago, and I love living here. I don't plan on moving, and the city's great, and it's getting better and better. I love serving Northampton. I love serving Ward 2. And, you know, I just hope that we can bring the tone down after this election is over, because it's been, it's been very rough, especially in Village Hill, where it's a very close-knit neighborhood, and it's been very, very divisive about this way this election has been run. And information that's been given to some people, but not everybody. I'm available to people to talk to them if you want to understand anything that's going on. I'm always happy to talk to you about the budget or whatever's on your mind. So I hope Al can agree on that, too, that we want to bring the tone down and get along afterwards and just go back to having our happy little area here.
I think Debbie Clemmer has good taste in music. And the reason I think that is because we've been at multiple music events at the same time. We're of similar age, obviously a similar generation, and apparently had similar listening histories, and I think that's pretty neat.
All right. Thank you. I think we have time for one more question this evening, so that will come from Alex, and to Al first, and then Deborah, and then we'll have our closing statements.
Can you describe in your own words your preferred leadership style in government and your preferred approach to problem solving in government?
Yes. Well, I ask a lot of questions. That's one thing you develop over time when you're dealing with someone who has executive power. In my case, it was a town manager. In this case, it's, it's a mayor. And I particularly know how to ask questions of people who don't want to answer them. And I actually think that's a missing skill that I've seen on this city council is asking of the follow-up question. Like, I've heard a number of times where the mayor or the finance director simply has not answered the question with a lot of words. And there needs to be the skill to keep at it, to find out what the answer is. As far as decision-making goes, when you do truly collaborate, when people are talking to each other, my experience is that when a group is involved in decision-making, you can, you can very often come up with solutions that no individual could ever think of. I can tell you of instances in my own life where I've been with a group of people, whether it's work or whatever it was, and we had to figure something out, and somebody, through the process of discussion and synthesis, comes up with an idea. And we all go, why didn't we think of that before? It's so obvious. But no individual could have. It took the group interacting, questioning, contributing, to get to that point. And that's what I hope we could do on the city council.
So like I said, I've developed excellent relationships with department heads and great respect for what they do. Many of them have been doing this work for decades and are experts in the field. They know how things work in Northampton. During a lot of the meetings, questions are asked. We get the agenda way ahead of time, so I talk to department heads, so we're not going to do a whole deliberation at the meeting and first find out information. I know the information coming into the meeting because I've researched it for days before. There's also open meeting law, so we can't talk to each, the councils can't talk among themselves. We could talk to three other councillors, four of the councils, as long as they don't talk to anybody else. So it's not like we can have large discussions among the councillors. Another thing that I've been thinking about a lot, well, I also think people are doing their best, and I let them know that, but the thing I've been thinking about is this whole, well, the way the budgets come up and all this discussion these past two years. It just, why didn't anybody come to me in Ward 2 to talk about it and ask questions, talk to the mayor, and just, instead of just making assumptions about how things are done? And instead of just making assumptions about how things are done in another state, or making these false accusations about hidden money? It's been super destructive in town and in our neighborhood. And I don't understand why people didn't talk about it first if there was questions or if you think you know how to do something better. I'm always open to hearing it, but it's just been this underground discussion.
All right. Thank you. This concludes the panel portion of the Ward II forum. So we have a minute for each candidate to give closing statements. And Debra, you get to go first, and Sal went first for opening statements.
Thank you. I want to again thank everybody for hosting and the questions. It's been an honor to serve this past term, and I'm eager to build on what we have accomplished in my next term. I've really valued the chance to talk to so many residents, both during my time on council and while knocking on doors. These conversations remind me why I do this work. I promise to help bring the tone down, to listen and to work respectfully and collaboratively with my colleagues on day one. We need honest, realistic conversations about our budget, about what's possible and sustainable. I've spent that time learning from our finance director, who has worked for municipal finance for decades, and from our independent auditor. If you want to know more about what I've contributed here in North Hampton, please visit my website or simply Google me.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. Let me clearly state, I am not running to be loyal to any mayor, whether Gina Louise Shara or Gillian DuKlos. I'm running to represent the residents of Ward II. If you believe there's nothing more that can be done to support school funding, you have a candidate for that. If you believe the way we are doing things now is the only way that they can be done, you have a candidate for that. We hear from Democratic leaders at all level of government that their hands are tied, so they can't deliver on promises. But it doesn't have to be this way. If you think our essential services must come first, if you think listening and engaging residents ought to be the job of a councillor, if you want a true dialogue in problem-solving made by curious and committed leaders, if you want checks on a strong mayor, if you believe in accountability of government decisions, then I am your candidate. Ward II, North Hampton, the time is now to forge a new path for responsive and inclusive government. Together is the only way. The time is now. I respectfully ask for your vote.
Please join me in giving a round of applause. Thank you both for your dedication. Audience, we're going to take a 10-minute break. Please take a moment to visit the League of Women Voters table at the back. There's lots of good materials that you can pick up. If you have questions for Ward VI candidates, you can submit them during the break. And Ward VI candidates, you can make your way up here, and we will get ready. Thank you.
All right, everyone. I'm going to ask you to kindly take your seats so we can start the next section of Thank you so much. I brought my little bell. My son texted me on his way home from school saying, "Mama, remember to bring your bell because your voice doesn't project well." Thank you all for coming. This is the second part of our forum this evening. This is our Ward Six Candidates Forum. So, thank you for staying with us or joining us for this part. As before, I'm going to remind everyone to please silence and put away your cellphones, whether you're a candidate or an audience member. Please put them away so we don't have them distracting us. If audience members, if you have questions for the candidates, something occurs to you, please raise your hand and we'll have a volunteer come and bring you one of the cards so you can write it out. Make sure that your question can be answered by both candidates. That's a ground rule. And please, hold your applause till the end, and we will give them a hearty round of applause at that time. So, once again, we are joined by our panelists, Alexander McDougall from the Daily Hampshire Gazette, and Jean Chirdak, who's joining us from the Franklin County League of Women Voters, who will be asking questions on behalf of the audience. Reminders for our candidates. We're going to begin with two-minute opening statements. Then, we'll be alternating with questions. You'll have one and a half minutes to answer each question. We have our volunteers who will be holding up their signs to remind you to keep on time. And then, we'll be concluding with one-minute closing statements. We'll be taking turns in terms of who answers first, and I'll be prompting you, so you don't have to think about that. And we are not providing additional time for rebuttals, but if you need to respond to something the other candidate said, you can work that into your allotted time. If you do see the red stop sign come up, please finish your sentence quickly. And with that, I'd like to introduce Christopher Stratton and Mary Ann LaBarge, our two candidates for Ward Six City Council for North Hampton. Mary Ann, you'll be doing the first opening statement, and then Chris.
Thank you.
So, please go right ahead.
My name is Mary Ann LaBarge. I have lived in North Hampton all my life. I own a home with my husband, Richard, and raised two sons who attended public schools and also attended Ryan Road School. I have passionately represented Ward Six and the city for over 26 years. I have served on nearly every committee on the council, and I know how to get things done. I sponsored the Drink and Water Protection Ordinance, preventing the expansion of the Glendale Road landfill. Helped conserve Turkey Hill and Parsons Brook, promoting green spaces, walking trails, and paving the way for the community solar farm. Advocated for multiple traffic safety improvements and the forthcoming of Florence Road after 14 to 15 years. I am so grateful that I am now, and they're there, the contractors, doing ADA compliance right after Florence Heights coming down Florence Road all the way up. And that is a million-dollar project, 14 to 15 years as a city councillor, trying to make it ADA compliant. And that serves for Ward Six and Ward Five. Also, I agree with affordable housing. I have also many, many buildings of Habitat for Humanity. I have effectively advocated for our residents with disabilities, workers' rights, women, people of color, and the LGBTQ+ community. I have personally addressed and resolved hundreds of residents' phone calls and concerns about city services and governance. I believe that North Hampton should be a safe, healthy, and affordable place for all residents to live here. North Hampton is facing many challenges today. Our small businesses are struggling while our residents are facing astronomical cost of living and affordable housing.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We appreciate your opening remarks. Chris, it's your turn. It was. I know, it went really fast.
Good evening. My name is Chris Stratton, and I'd like to begin by thanking the League of Women Voters, Bombix, and the Gazette, and by thanking Mary Ann LaBarge for her 28 years of service to our ward. No, it's 28. I looked it up. 1997, you lost in '95, you won in '97. And by her dedication to constituent services. Mary Ann and I recognize the same challenges our city faces. Where we differ is in what we will do about them. We can expect Mary Ann to continue doing as she has. She will raise your concerns in council, but when it comes time to vote, she votes instead as the mayor directs. She has understaffed our schools and city services by diverting recurring revenue to an agenda of dubious projects. She overpaid for Eric Sauer's unusable church and repeatedly votes for a dangerous and impractical redo of Main Street. I, in contrast, will be new to government service. I bring a lifelong love of deep research and solving complex problems. Unlike those who take shallow presentations or the conclusions of backroom advisory boards at face value, I dig for the original facts. I will prioritize using the revenues our city already receives to fund our schools, roads, and services. Five years ago, I came to North Hampton to be with family during a challenging time in history, and I love what I have found. Because I have seen the contrasts of life here and elsewhere, I know that North Hampton needs policies which suit our local needs. Counter to the mayor's agenda of forcing undesired change upon our city, I seek to enable Hamp to be the best version of what it already is. I will represent you as a councillor who prioritizes our schools and services, budgeting wisely to keep taxes affordable. I will look deeply into the issues and consider how each proposal would impact your life before I cast my vote on it.
Thank you. All right, we're now going to go into questions from the panelists. So, Alex, you'll be asking the first question, and Chris, you'll answer it first, and then Mary Ann, you'll answer after Chris.
Okay. Sorry about that. Thank you both for being here. The school budget has arguably been the most prominent issue over the last term. Advocates have been calling for higher school spending. The city has increased the school budget, but it still has led to some reduction in staff and services. Do you support higher school spending? And if so, how do you propose to do so? The State's Department of -- DZ Department has recently confirmed what parents have long been telling us, which is that we have been systematically underserving children with special needs. And we have, you know, as you've heard, we've been cutting teachers even as we, you know, generate a surplus year after year. So, we really have to look at the way that we routinely underestimate our local receipts. I mean, we are very fortunate that our roughly 70 million to 80 million in property taxes is routinely augmented by another 25 million in local business taxes. And our economy is doing very well. Our fourth quarterly isn't out officially, but it shows that our interest income is doing well. We generated 2.8 million in interest income, which is 2.6 million more than we budgeted for. So, you know, we actually have this money. We need to stop quietly leaving it on the table, sort of building in a future buffer of capital spending into the legitimate uncertainty of our local receipts. We leave this money on the table, then at the end of the year, we sweep it up like we just won the poker jackpot, and, oh, this is one-time money we can only use on a project. Well, it was originally recurring money we could have used for staffing. You know, I would love to have more Chapter 78 from the state, but if that's someone's only answer for the schools, they are not taking responsibility for solving the problem in the way that North Hampton can.
Mary Ann?
Thank you. You know, there's two sides to the State's K-12 education funding formula. We need to really say what our problem is here with our school funding. We must crack open and reform the Chapter 70 formula so that it addresses schools with declining or stagnant enrollment, rural schools, regional schools, the impact of special education costs, and more. There also is a great deal to be gained by revising the required local contribution. The required local contribution formula has not been reviewed or amended in 18 years. Why not? What has happened here at our State House? Why has not our legislators and senators way back 18 years out of hand, out of control here? We would not be in this predicament, period. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question will come from Jean on behalf of the audience, and Mary Ann, you will answer it first.
I'm going first.
Yes.
What do you feel is the most pressing issue for Ward Six? And what do you propose, and how do you propose to address it?
Could you repeat that again, please?
Sure. What do you feel is the most pressing issue for Ward Six? And what do you propose to address it?
I do have some serious problems in Ward Six. In all my years as a city councillor, you've got to know, you've got to be there to see it with your eyes. Your eyes will tell it all. I have many, many residents of need, and I'm talking about serious needs here. I really went to the mayor, that was David Narcoitz at that point, where I had a resident who did not have no heat, nothing in his house. I walked in there, he had his coat on, his hat on. It was pathetic, and his little dog. No heat, no stove, nothing. I was really impressed with our former representative, Peter Colcock. I took my resident in the car, and he said, "Where are you taking me, councillor?" And he had his little dog with him. I said, "Just be quiet." I said, "I'm going to bring you where you're going to get some help." And that happened. That happened. When Peter saw my resident, he talked with him personally. He said, "We're going to get you all the help we can." And even with community action with Claire Higgins, she told me that he applied, and it was sitting up there in the state for months and months and months. No heat, nothing, nothing. Very, very poor. Anyways, a miracle happened. David Narcoitz talked with my resident also as mayor at that time. We were able--
I'm afraid we're out of time. Thank you for that response. Yeah. I apologize.
Well, I'd actually like to quickly answer Mary Ann's question about the Chapter 70. And the reason the state is not giving us more Chapter 78 is that Chapter 70 really exists to help a disadvantaged community. It's there for a Springfield, and it's there to offset the economic and racial disparities of using property taxes as our primary school funding. You know, I'd love to see a statewide switch to income taxes as the school funding source, but the state is not going to easily give North Hampton more money because to give North Hampton more money, it would have to give far, far more and more money to rich communities in eastern Massachusetts. Addressing the question about, you know, concerns in Ward Six, you know, one of the things we have in Ward Six is we have a number of modest three-bedroom homes that were built all-electric. I mean, I guess I'm lucky because I have the, you know, the gas that we really need to be moving away from. But we have a bunch of all-electric homes, and they're, you know, traditional resistance baseboard electric, and that is an extremely expensive way to heat. You know, we have the MassSave programs and things to move to heat pumps, which is far more cost-effective, but it's still a high-upfront cost. But the overall problem of Ward Six is the rest of the city. We have a government that does not focus on the needs of our people, but is instead pursuing a detached agenda of special projects. And we need a city council that is going to return the focus of this government to the everyday needs of our ordinary people.
Thank you. All right, Alex, you have the next question, and Chris, you'll be answering it first.
Do you support a Proposition 2.5 override to allow for spending increases related to the city's budget?
I do not. I think it is very clear that this is not acceptable to the people of North Hampton. You pay a lot in taxes, you are not willing to pay more, and you are especially not willing to pay more when you don't trust how our government is using your money. I mean, you know, we just saw what happened in Hadley. Unlike North Hampton, you know, they are, I do not believe they have the same helpful degree of, you know, local receipts to prop up their property taxes. I don't know that they have the investment income. Their situation is dire, but our situation is not dire. Our economy is doing very well. Our local receipts help our city income. We can actually afford to fund our schools and take care of our people without an override. Yet, at the Ward Three Neighborhood Association forum the other night, our mayor said that we were going to need an override. In her plan, we'll have an override in the next year or two. That's what she said. You just heard Demi Clemmer echo that in the previous forum. That is the incumbent plan for this city, a tax override. We need smarter spending. We need to prioritize using the money we already receive to take care of our people because the voters are not going to give us more money, and they're especially not going to give us more money when they don't trust how we're using it.
Okay, here we go. And I'm going to do this in one minute. I do not support a Proposition 2.5. And here's my reasons why. People cannot afford it anymore, period, period in a city. They are stressed out with all the fees in the city, and I'm being honest about this. I will, as a city councillor, when it comes to us to place it on the ballot, that is what we call democracy, your right to vote. And I will never stop anybody with their rights to vote, but I will not support a Prop 2.5. I'm hearing it from many, many people, Ward Six and throughout the city being born and raised here. They are just maxed out, maxed out. They cannot afford it. Too many fees, the stormwater fee, right down the line. So, that's my feelings about it. I do not support it, period. And that's my reasons why. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question will come from Jean on behalf of the audience. Mary Ann, you will answer it first. From Jean.
Can you explain to us how the Resilience -- Resilency Hub was assessed? Was it assessed in a traditional way? And how much will it cost to run the hub? And where will that money come from?
Okay, I do support that. I think it's absolutely needed in our city. I have done two site visits there, and the original cost for it, we got it lower than the original cost, a little bit lower. I've been in it. Like councillor Clemmer had stated, it's excellent. Yes, it's Use for a Day program, and I feel that there's so many people in need in our city that we already have caseworkers, like with the community care that we have in the city now, which I supported 100%. 1,700 people have been taken care with Community Care Center. So, I agree with this hub. As far as the ongoing price of it, I cannot answer to that. You would have to get that answer probably from our mayor.
Well, first, I want to say that the idea of centralizing homeless services in one location was a very good idea. In particular, you have people navigating multiple user-hostile paperwork streams, and being able to just send them to the next desk down the line is much better than trying to get them to come back in again to deal with something else distinctly. But this building was a horrible mistake. It is completely unsuited, even ignoring the price. Now, as to the specific question about the assessment, what happened was that the city entered some negotiations with Eric Sauer, yes, the Eric Sauer of the rest of downtown. And, you know, they agreed on a price. And then Wayne Fiden, who was the planning director at the time, he was close to the end of his tenure, he sent an email to the assessor, and he said, "You know, we have an agreement to buy it for this price. Please do an assessment." Well, interesting, the assessment came back for about what they'd already agreed to buy it for. There was a different assessment done by a Boston-based firm that did traditional comparative analysis, and they came, you know, to like 1.6 million instead of 3.2 million. At this point, you know, this project has become an albatross around the mayor's neck. I mean, the community organizations that were supposed to have their services there, they've abandoned the project. They're not going to, you know, fundraise for this. The building is unusable. It doesn't have a gas line. It doesn't have a floor. This was Wayne Fiden's baby, and if you go to Main Street and you look right now, you will see that in Wayne's world, there is no staircase.
All right. Thank you. The next question will come from Alex, and Chris, it will go to you first.
Over the last two years, there have been several issues in the city that have led to some divisions within the community and within the local government. It's led to moments of tensions and disruptions within council and school committee meetings. Do you feel there is a need for a more civil discourse currently going on in the city, or is that just democracy at work?
One of the things that's become very, very aware to me, and even, you know, aware since I entered this campaign, is I really understand that everyone involved in city government and running for office has the best interests of our city at heart. They are doing what they feel is correct. The difference is in what information informs that belief. And we have people in this city who've decided that it is their obligation to do things which are, I would say, painful but necessary. And unfortunately, if you convinced yourself of that necessity, then you assert a mental discipline, and you refuse to look at the things which would say that your decision is not actually necessary. And this is where a lot of our debates come from, people who've made up their mind refusing to look at the actual details. Now, what I've been so impressed by is over the last year and a half since school funding, you know, became an overt crisis, people in this community have become so involved, have become so knowledgeable, and have had so many ideas they bring to our government. And we've begun having a wonderful civic debate, and it's a very healthy one. We need to work to make sure that we're dealing with the same set of facts, and I will say, yes, there have sometimes been particular arguments from my side of the argument that we're not, my side of the aisle, that we're not correct, and we need to work on that too. But we need to work together. We need to talk. We need to compare ideas, and we need to be a city where democracy functions, particularly with a city council that functions as an independent branch of government and not just an approval body for everything the mayor asks.
I disagree with some of the things you're saying, Chris. I feel that, yes, I agree with the loud voices, but I don't agree with the bullying and the harassing that's happening in our city. We all want the best education for our children. There's no question about it. And the loud voices, I hear it. I understand it. But we need to work together and do what is right here in the city. That I am for 100%. And I also want to thank Meg Robbins because of the petition she has put in place, and I signed it, and that is the Chapter 70 funding. And I stated that at city council. We all need to come together and work together and go to the State House and fight, and fight with our loud voices, all of us with our loud voices, and say, "We want that Chapter 70 money that is well-deserved for all rural areas in the city of North Hampton." Thank you.
Thank you. The next two questions will come from Jean on behalf of the audience. Mary Ann, you'll be answering first. A question from Jean.
How important is it to keep municipal government in its current structure?
I think possibly, and I've heard this before, about looking at having a manager in the city. I've heard this for years and years and years. I have to say that the mayor, she's in control. We're just the legislative body. I think city councillors should be really stronger, really stronger, and be able, to be able to do what should be done. And the mayor is the executive. I would like to see a finance committee meeting that we're involved with the team, with the beginning to the end of the budget. And I mean, before we even get that budget book. And to me, that's critical. I can't answer if that will ever happen or not. And I also would have to agree also that maybe our finance committee meeting should meet maybe quarterly with the school committee, with the finance and property committee, because I think that's what it's going to take. How long it's going to take us to crack open that Chapter 70 money? We need to put something in place so we can work together. Without that Chapter 70 funding, we're going to be in problems. We're going to be looking at Prop 2.5s, and I really am worried about all of this. And I think we all, all the loud voices, even my voice here, right? We've got to work together to make it happen. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean, could you please repeat the question?
How important is it to keep municipal government in its current structure?
I think I would keep the current basic structure. In particular, I don't really think that I would replace the mayor with a city manager. I mean, does a city manager give the city council more power? Well, maybe, but only really by firing the mayor, I mean, by firing the manager. In operation, you know, the mayor's powers are pretty much those of our current mayor. I would like to see some minus changes, though. I think we should opt into Chapter 329, which gives the city council a fallback path to fund the schools without the consent of the mayor. One of the arguments that's been raised against this is that it is unfair that we can do this only for the schools, and I actually agree. If you look at the state legislature or Congress, you know, the legislative body can make a necessary appropriation for any purpose, and I think the city council should have that power as well. But we do unique things for children, and I would take the power that state law currently offers and then think about changing the charter to extend that. I actually was really pleased that Mary Ann recognized that refusing to meet with the School Committee Budget and Property Committee last year was a mistake. You have never seen hard-working government in operation until you see that committee, and I hope the voters of Ward Four return its hard-working chair. I would like to see the School Committee overall have its own chair, though. Having the mayor as the chair does keep the mayor's attention on the schools, but the School Committee really needs the autonomy of voice of having its own chair. And I would also like to see attention put into the back-room advisory boards, which the mayor appoints. The Capital Improvement Plan Committee, to which Melissa Elkins infamously said, "The mayor could appoint a chiapet if she wanted." If this work is done in back rooms, the city council is going to have to redo much of it in the public eye.
Thank you. All right, another question from the audience from Jean, and Chris, you will be the first to answer. So Chris will answer, yep?
I did two.
You did two?
I think so.
You only did one?
So I think it was just one.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Will you vote to represent your ward or the mayor?
I will absolutely vote to represent the needs of Ward Six and also our population as a whole. I mean, we have a mayoral administration that is charged off in paths that are perhaps well-intentioned but leave much of this city behind. I think a textbook example of that is the ill-conceived Main Street project. I mean, we absolutely need to tackle the accessibility challenges of downtown sidewalks, but we need to do that as its own standalone project right now and not keep delaying that and co-opting that need to sell this grandiose and ill-considered project. If you look at the actual bike crashes downtown and don't just count them as the designers did, but really look at what happened, you see that they're caused by surprise, mostly in the intersections and when bikes ride where drivers have difficulty seeing us. You know, when you have seniors aging in place in a Ward Six ranch, getting downtown requires driving or taking a paratransit van, and that means we need not just special parking but overflow of ordinary parking in curbs which are not in conflict with a hidden bike route. We need a downtown that has simple, sensible fixes. We need to paint the lane lines, do raised crosswalks and curb extensions. And we need a citywide bike policy that focuses not on avoiding interaction between bikes and cars, but on having the sorts of interactions that are fundamentally safe. You know, that's just one example, though. I mean, school funding is another. We really need a city council which stands up and works for the needs of our people, and that means that sometimes we're going to be butting heads with the mayor, but I hope that we're also able to cooperate with the mayor and her departments.
Okay. You know, I've been serving Ward Six for 26 years. You can ask any constituent I served or any of the four mayors I've worked with how I approach the job. I put constituents first, and I always will. When a constituent tells me they have a problem, I work to help solve that problem. And if that means calling up the mayor, I call the mayor. Every mayor knows they can't tell me ever what to do. When it's time to vote, I exercise my own judgment after hearing all the facts, but I treat every mayor with respect, and that's the value right there. I can do the most for my constituents. I just feel that always, for the 26 years, in my heart, for all my residents in Ward Six, all my children, all my youth, my needy, and my seniors, and I have many, many wealthy people in Ward Six, and hopefully, these wealthy people will come forth, especially one development right now going about $15 million, will help us redo Turkey Hill Road. Thank you.
All right. Mary Ann, the next question will come to you first from Alex.
How do you plan to address issues related to recruiting and retaining staff in the DPW, which has faced challenges in that department, and how would you foster a culture that values and supports municipal employees?
Can you repeat that?
Yes. How would you address issues related to recruiting and retaining staff at the DPW? And how would you foster a culture that values and supports municipal employees?
You know, I thank you for that question. I just talked with the director, Donna LaScalia, on the staffing. We're down. And I said, "What is the problem here, Donna?" I said, "I've never seen it as a city councilor happen like this." She told me just last Friday that the big problem is they're getting jobs from private businesses making and starting off with $50 and up, and they cannot do that at DPW. They have just done an increase for them, and I have to say, they're working tirelessly at BPW. They are also, and they have contracted off because of the storm over the weekend that we had to help, you know, go ahead and fill all the potholes that were a problem, and they were uncarded away, trimming trees and so forth for the city. So hopefully, and I even had a resident on Ryan Road who came to City Council, and he retired. I said, "Go to DPW. They're looking for seasonal work." And he said, "I will do that." And it's important here to help DPW staff. They need a lot of praising. They are working tirelessly out there. So hopefully, we can get some more people to come in and help our director, Donna LaScalia, and all their staff. I don't understand why we cannot give them what some of these private businesses are giving. That's why they're leaving or they're retiring. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I've spent my professional career building computers, not bridges, but nonetheless, you know, the Department of Public Works and our city infrastructure is a subject very near to my heart, and I really look forward to working with our DPW director, who I find very impressive, you know, and her staff. You know, obviously, the Department of Public Works is under the mayor's authority and, you know, does not take order from the city council, and that, you know, we need to respect that. But I hope that it's a good conversation of, you know, sharing concerns and information and passing ideas back and forth. In terms of the staffing problem, I've had a chance to talk with some DPW employees, and there's some interesting nuances to that. I spoke to an older gentleman who was, you know, nearing retirement, and he appreciated the pension that he built up in, you know, a very traditional kind of municipal job where you get that benefit. But he was talking about how the younger workers, you know, they look at their take-home pay, and they look at what they can get from a construction company versus the city. And, you know, if you're looking at your take-home pay as you would in your 20s, you know, we're not competitive, and so that's going to be a hard thing to figure out. But, you know, I think we need a budgeting priority from the city council. You know, we talk a lot about the schools, but it's also our DPW, our FIRE and EMS. You know, we need to make this a priority, and we need to have good channels of communication that, yes, respect the mayor's authority for operations, but the fact that the city council cannot function as a branch of government unless we're able to have meaningful conversations with city departments.
Thank you. Next question will come from Jean on behalf of the audience. Chris, you will answer it first.
How much money does the city have in surplus, and what would you propose to do with these, with those funds? Street safety, picture Main Street? Couple of suggestions.
Well, you know, I have to admit that that exact total is not on my note sheet up here, but one of the things I think we have to keep in mind is that while it's a very large number, it's divided up into different, some different pots. You know, we have the enterprise funds, and the savings in those are only for those purposes. You know, the water savings go only to water, the sewer savings go only to sewer, et cetera. We're not going to raid those, and there's been some false acquisitions that we were thinking of that, and we absolutely are not. The more interesting stabilization funds are the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund, which is, you know, for subsidizing or ongoing operations. Traditionally, that was created and is refilled by the override. Yes, I read the same white paper the mayor did. You know, we're not going to be doing an override, but we can refill that fund with some of the, you know, recurring tax revenue, the local receipts, the investment income, which we've been leaving on the table. That is recurring revenue. We can use it directly for the coming year's budget, or we can run it through the Fiscal Stability Fund as a sort of rainy day. You know, in some ways, I'm a cautious person. I would rather spend last year's excess money than the coming year's, but that's viewed as unconventional. So, you know, we'll put it directly into the budget. What those stabilization funds do is let us keep pushing the thread of an override, you know, about two years into the future. And, you know, so we don't, we don't need one. We can keep pushing it out. The Capital Stabilization Fund, you know, can help us fix a leaky roof or something, but we also have a stellar bond rating, so we could borrow money very cheaply, and we borrow money about half as often as a comparable city would. Even the mayor's climate director the other day admitted that we should be borrowing more.
Thank you.
Okay, I feel that it's a necessary part because we support our operations. We also want to make sure we have the funds to support our infrastructure in total. We also want to refill the reserves also, along with the stabilization funds. So we use these funds for financial emergencies, natural disasters, or anything else that may arise. That's what it's all about here. Thank you.
All right. Alex, it's your turn, and Mary Ann, you'll answer it first. A question from Alex.
How do you feel about the city's current approach to affordable housing in the city, and what would you do to further support affordable housing in the city?
I'm for affordable housing 100% in Northampton. And just like in Ward Six, Habitat for Humanity. I have Habitat for Humanity on Glendale Road. I have six condos. I have one single. I also have on Purspret Road, three houses there, and they are so happy to have their own home. And also, I just, right now, have a new home off of Woodline, and they are so happy I was over there talking with them. These are people who really proved to improve their credit and work, and they are glad. And I think, as a city councilor, I would really support affordable apartments here in Northampton. I think there's a big problem with rental in Northampton, not giving notices that their rent's going to go up. I was told by somebody, somebody's rent went up $150 more. Never given a notice. I am so proud, so proud as a city councilor to do rent control. There's no question about it. People cannot work here. Everything that they're making, they're in college and they're trying to work, they're renting apartments with three or four of them in it, and not knowing how much the rent's going to go up. I am for affordable housing. I also feel that I have a problem with CPA money. Here we have people coming, contractors.
I'm afraid we ran out of time. Thank you. I apologize, Mary Ann. You have a lot to share, I know. Please repeat the question.
The question was, "How do you feel about the city's current approach to affordable housing, and what would you do to support affordable housing in Northampton?"
You know, I've had the opportunity to live in two different parts of Northampton. I first rented, actually, in an accessory dwelling off of State Street, and, you know, that was an area where I could, I could walk or bike to a lot of the city, and then I was able to become a first-time homeowner behind the Ryan Red School. And we're pretty much the only mass production of affordable market housing we ever had, the three-to-four-bedroom ranches, the little ones we built in the late '60s and early '70s. You know, I live in a wonderful neighborhood. The downside is we're four miles from anything. So, you know, I don't want to say that we shouldn't build affordable housing in Ward Six because, you know, I love being able to walk out my door and be in the woods in five minutes. I love our conservation areas, and Mary Ann's done so much to create those. But if we build housing, and especially affordable housing in Ward Six, every time we build a housing unit, we're putting another car or two on the road that's going to go back and forth twice a day. So if we're talking about using our cars less, that works against it. If we look something like the former registry site at 33 King Street, that's opposite the five-story Hotel Northampton. It's a wonderful spot to build a five-story building. But unfortunately, and I know from living near there, while you can do a lot of your needs without getting in a car, sooner or later, you are going to have to get in a car. We are basically a suburban town with a few blocks of city. And so, you know, our economy is mostly service jobs. They have weird locations and weird hours that are hard to suit with public transit. I mean, our bus service rolls up at 7:30 PM. So you combine service sector jobs, especially with parenthood, and to have livable housing, you need to have parking. So 94 units and 22 parking spots does not work.
All right. Thank you. I think we have just concluded our panel portion of this, of this forum. So our last part will be to allow the candidates to give one-minute closing statements in the reverse order in which they did the opening statement. So that means that Chris will go first, and then Mary Ann, and then we will be giving them a big round of applause. But first, Chris, please.
Thank you for participating in our civic process tonight. I hope you've had an opportunity to see the distinct approaches Mary Ann and I bring to our city's challenges, our distinct understanding of your needs, of the schools, of the Main Street project, which Mary Ann co-sponsored but I oppose, and of the role of the council in counterbalance to the mayor. Elections are often about the person, but this year, across the city, our election is a referendum. A referendum on our priorities, on what we choose to be as a community. Will we be a city which prioritizes our people, a city which prioritizes especially our seniors and our children? Or will we elect a government which ignores its people and spends your money making our city, remaking our city to suit the whims of an out-of-touch agenda? I ask your vote for myself, for Deb Henson, for Meg Robbins, and for councilors citywide who will come together, bringing unique perspectives to create a government which works for our people rather than against you, a government which enables him to be the best version of itself.
I am proud to serve as a city councilor in Ward Six and in our city, a community that embraces tolerance and diversity. I am an experienced city councilor with a record of getting things done. I believe I have an obligation to my residents and will continue to be a persistent, tireless, and effective worker. I have always been available to you. I have a proven record of my accomplishments. Your vote is your choice. This is your right, your democracy. I will always be available, and I humbly in respect and ask for your vote on November 4th at Ryan Road School. Polls open up at seven, eight o'clock, seven o'clock in the morning to eight o'clock at night. Thank you very much.
Thank you to our candidates. Thank you to our candidates. Thank you to our panelists. Thanks to Bombay. Get out and vote. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for announcing the election. Thank you for mentioning the polling place.